Start by stating from pledge. A pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, roll call.
Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Eisner?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Stathis?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
All right, uh, approval of minutes when I may like to make motion to approve the minutes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any concerns? All right, any due questions on that?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Communications, uh, fourth communications received. Anybody? Just the normal things we've seen back from the last, uh, July twentieth meeting. Concerns, uh, had a lot of conversations, good conversations, so. As I did. When will the board allow visitors to come to the board? Uh, up in town, you still have the, the ten max. Are we gonna, we're gonna still follow that guideline, Mitch? I can reach out to, um, Wednesday, I have another meeting with Iowa County and I could certainly see if Iowa County's willing to relax those guidelines a little bit more for indoors, but I'm just going off the last recommendations for Iowa County Health Department. Sure.
And, and the recommendations from Iowa County, it, it's not like it's a state mandate, it's certainly a re- a recommendation, a suggestion.
That, that's correct, that's all you're get- that's all you're getting is recommendations, guidelines, not saying that this is absolute law or anything of that nature, so.
Right. And since the mask mandate went into effect, certainly, I think, the library could handle more attention. And still, I still would feel safe, I don't know about the rest of you folks, but. So I, I would like to see us maybe at least decrease that number.
I'd be fine with that.
But I, we're gonna have more than ten in a room once school starts.
Well, you're exactly right.
So at that point, we're already practicing it.
So maybe for next.
So I think that's meeting.
Next meeting, we open it up back to the public and just being here with chairs.
Yeah, maybe put. I just don't want to embarrass the chair, how social testing.
Yeah.
I don't think that, I think we should continue offering a Zoom option, though, for, for the foreseeable future.
I have no problem with that.
Um, I had some communication from a, from a parent in the district regarding the class cohorts that came out today. Um, specifically, her two younger elementary students are placed in two separate cohorts. And, uh, I, I, we can address that as we talk about the reopening plan, but, um, I, I just, I'd like to understand how frequently that happened and if there is some way, I mean, I, I get that there was a lot that happened in a short amount of time, but is there a way to appeal that or to for reconsideration? Um, because that is definitely adding a layer of complexity for that family of having a, I think it's a first and a second grader on two different cohorts, so.
On, on different days of the week, is that?
Yeah, so, um, for different day, different, so if somebody's coming on Monday and Tuesday and somebody's coming on Thursday and Friday.
Okay, yeah, that's certainly something we can look at.
Yeah, they, they spent a lot of time trying to avoid that.
Within, within forty-five minutes of when the schedules were published, I had a message saying, I'm very disappointed, this isn't what I expected, and I think that's very fair for that parent to feel like.
Absolutely.
Really, so I just want to make sure we have an avenue for people to express those concerns and have us re- make adjustments if we need to.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. Doc? Doctor Dunn?
Yeah, 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 sorry, I had to unmute. Uh, I just want to echo Joni's comments and, uh, I've also had a few questions about the status of the remodel project. And, uh, just wondering if, uh, I noticed there's, uh, nothing on the agenda talking about an update on the status of the project either from Tim from HSR or, uh, um, or Eric with Kramer Brothers, so, uh.
Got Eric here, actually, I was gonna, after board communications, I was gonna have him, um, step in there with forces and communications and give us an update.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that on the agenda.
And I had had a couple on communication, but it sounds like we got something out today. Um, a couple others, a- and I think just to be clear, I think there were some parents that were confused that the survey was a, a request form or a, a preference form. And, um, in, in a few things I've read that, that feel like they didn't get what they chose. So I think we just need to be clear that that was a, a survey, and I think we were clear, but I think for any confusion out there, that was a, a survey and not a, a this is my choice in terms of us being able to, to deliver what everybody selected on the survey.
I'm sorry. Okay, I think the, the one communication I heard from the parent who was pretty upset was the fact that seniors only day are Fridays. When we know that some of these seniors are gonna be traveling for college visits and they might need a three-day weekend and the Friday's their only day in school, that that could be a potential problem. And they would really like to see that changed if possible, okay?
So, sure. I got one more thing that's unrelated to COVID. It's been brought to my attention that possibly, Mitch, you, you have employees using our postal machine in, in the building. Want to check on that for us, and if they are, they shouldn't have to. Okay, I will, I will. Or personally. If, if it's, yeah, I can look into that. Typically, if somebody uses it, they will, they reimburse the district for the postage. Okay. Um, but I will certainly look into that.
All right. Thanks, Mitch.
Yep.
Any other board communications? All right, can we jump in and have Eric Portz?
Eric, you're online?
Yep, I'm here, guys.
Thank you for joining us tonight, if you'd like to give an update, uh, kind of where the building project is and how much water you took on today.
Yeah, it, uh, it's been, been a pretty wet day, but, uh, we had about an inch and a half there. Um, but just, uh, just an update since, uh, since the last time we talked, um, this last week, we, uh, we set the precast wall panels along the north side of the gym in the, uh, library. Um, the rest of those panels will get, uh, set later this month, uh, into early September. Uh, we started the, uh, block wall at the south side of the gym, so that'll, uh, continue to go up, uh, through the month of August. Uh, we finished the block wall along the existing school, uh, that got finished up this afternoon. Going into the, the next couple of weeks, will we, uh, start, um, starting the erection of the, uh, structural steel in the loft area? Uh, we'll be, uh, setting the precast, uh, plank at the north entryway, um, leaning down to the stairs, leading down to the library. And then, uh, we'll actually start setting the roof joist and the roof deck, uh, as we continue on in the month of August. Uh, we'll continue up our block walls and, uh, as I said before, uh, by September, uh, we should have all the walls standing on the exterior of the building.
Great, any, any questions for Eric, Doc?
Yeah, Eric, thanks for the update, uh, just wondering if, uh, things are going according to schedule, any unanticipated um, issues or change orders so far and, uh, any anticipated barriers to the progress?
Sure, um, on, we're right on schedule, uh, everything's going, going, uh, good in that route, um, yeah, with, you know, the soil conditions of, of Mineral Point, obviously, there's, uh, there's issues with, uh, with undercuts and, and rock removal. Um, so working through those, um, but, um, definitely keeping pressure on our, our schedule to, uh, to stay on that. You know, just, uh, unforeseen conditions of the, uh, the existing school, you know, as we, uh, we're digging foundations and you know, you, uh, you uncover some unknown pipes and, uh, we're, uh, we're working through all of those and making sure everything's up to snuff and ready for next year.
Thank you.
Just Eric, Larry Stathis here, uh, again, thanks for the update. Of course, you've been on projects where school has been in session, I would assume, right, Eric?
Yes, yep.
All of two weeks, our kids will be back in that building and, uh, will there be any significant changes to the, to the, your crews, um, during, during the time school is in session? I'm just curious, really, this building project.
Um, basically, I've, I've had conversation with the guys that, um, you know, they need to definitely be respectful of, of everyone, um, teachers and students that are gonna be at the school. Um, making sure they're, uh, thinking before they're, you know, using any foul language. And, um, we're going to, um, get rid of any radios, uh, on the job site, just so there isn't, uh, any distracting noises from the students.
And, and you guys, right, so safety procedures, I mean, the gates will be closed.
Yep.
You're, you're meant to say out of the school building as much as possible, correct?
Yep, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll limit as, as much work as we can inside the school, obviously, there'll still be some, some work with the mechanicals of getting the boiler system up and running. Um, that's just a, uh, part of the project that takes a little longer than, than others, so, um, but we'll, uh, we'll go through any of the, the school's processes for checking in and um, definitely keep an eye on making sure no, uh, no kids are sneaking into the job site.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Anything else?
Oh, all right. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll jump into citizens.
Oh, wait, Mitch, can we see if we can get Tim at the next meeting?
Sure. I didn't want to ask him, is it common for Tim not to speak to us throughout all this, or?
I think we try and get him, since they're handling the payment approvals. Just to have him speak to us about the financial side of it and where we're at next meeting, I think would be a good idea.
Yeah, we had, there was a owner, architect, contractor meeting, uh, where Roger and I, Tim, uh, Mitch Gilbertson from Kramer's, just kind of looked at how things are going. Um, I had a chance to talk to Tim and, you know, what, what's his comfort level, but I, I will certainly ask him to come to the September one, and he's volunteered to come to any board meeting, he would be more than happy to be here in person, too, if, if you would like it to be that way. But he can certainly join us through a Zoom meeting as well, you know, at a board meeting and kind of share where, where he is, but he feels very comfortable where we are right now financially in the process and with, with, uh, any kind of change order that has come in. Except we're through the, through the worst of it, as, as, as he put it. Doc Dunn?
Yeah, I just want to underscore that, I mean, I mean, we are responsible for a multimillion dollar project here. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think, I think Tim should be at every board meeting until this project is done and every penny is spent. And whether it's in person or not, I would, I would say if it's a really brief update, everything's going fine, there've been no major changes, barriers, problems. You know, a few minutes for a Zoom check-in, just like Eric did, I think would be fine, if there's big issues that have come up. You know, I think he should be there in person, or, you know, if he has to show some changes in the plans or some new photos or anything, you know, he should be in person, but, uh, this should be a standing item on the agenda.
Okay, let's go into citizen communications. If you're interested in addressing the school, uh, or the board, just start by stating your name so we know who's talking, please. Might have, I got, get a text of somebody who's trying to join, so I don't know if that was for this. Any citizen communications? No, okay.
This is Amy Tibbetts, um, from Mineral Point, seven sixty Los Grove Road, Mineral Point, Wisconsin. Um, I guess I just have some concerns about other school districts opening up maybe more, uh, full-time specifically with elementary school students. I've spoken with Dr. Kramer, who's in charge of doing both Dodgeville and, um, Platteville reopening programs, along with looking at Dr. Ulster Holmes opening plans for Minnesota school districts. And the number of students, uh, or the students coming, it looks like in a lot of these plans is, um, favoring elementary students and returning to full-time and allowing, um, more middle school to be, and high school to be coming, uh, to, uh, school more in a hybrid fashion, depending upon where current pandemic levels are. And so I think moving forward, um, you know, there are increasing levels in Grant and Lafayette and and, uh, a little bit here in Iowa County, and so I guess the main concern is, is that with our current plan, the way it's stated is just like, uh, let's see how it goes and then recheck in a month. Um, it seems a, a little bit, um, lax, it doesn't give us in the community, um, uh, information as far as what's our plan moving forward if numbers are rising? In which, since we approved for the, um, school to open in a complete hybrid for both elementary and for high school, um, we, uh, we've seen, uh, numbers change, and so, uh, you know, that might put people who are really afraid of COVID in apprehension on wanting to send their kids to school, it may put people who are in a realistic end of things like, okay, how do we, you know, go about figuring out our school opening plan? And so, um, I had given information to all of the board members kind of on what Minnesota is doing for their opening plan. Um, that's based on, uh, one of the top, uh, American epidemiologists, um, uh, as far as reopening. Their plan is, is that if there's, uh, in a two-week period, less than nine people per ten thousand population, that you can open full. Um, and it's, it escalates from there, so currently for Iowa County, um, today, um, moving two weeks back, our number is twenty-three. And so if we look at the data, zero to nine puts us at, with our population at twenty-one cases of positives, new positives. If you look at opening, um, for ten to nineteen new cases based on this, uh, Minnesota opening plan, it looks as if the elementary could still stay in full open and we should then switch to the high school being into a hybrid. And so I've, I've talked to plenty of other, you know, um, uh, local providers, um, plenty of other school districts, um, and it just seems as if we need to maybe, um, evaluate what our plan is and maybe come up with a plan. What are we gonna do when numbers rise? Because they're gonna rise when we send kids back to school, I mean, they're, they're gonna definitely rise, and so I know that we have like a three-minute limit, so um, I'll kind of, um, uh, leave it at that, but, um, I just think that we haven't put, um, uh, you know, some of the new information um, into play since we've made that decision, and it's leaving a lot of, uh, parents out there wondering what to do with their kids. I've heard from one teacher, you know, having had their, um, daycare being dropped, knowing that daycare in this area is pretty limited. And so if we can focus on the data that's come out, that kids ten and under are less likely to transmit things, we can maybe do a twofold thing, we can provide education to those kids that need it and we can alleviate some of the daycare things, um, in our community's shortages. So the concern is, is that if we don't have daycare and the kids are just going back home, who's watching those kids? And are we then exposing grandparents and older generation of our community who's at more risk than the kids actually just going to school? That's some of the stuff I've been hearing out in the community.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, any other citizen communications? Okay, um, jump into items for information discussion.
Uh, an update on, uh, food service review. There were some, some guidelines and directions given that, uh, were being followed and then, um, obviously, due to the virus and school shooting down in March, came to a screeching halt, but, uh, there was the addition of salad bar option at the middle school, high school building being put into the menu. There was an ask to have new food items tried and that was in the process of being used i- in the second semester of the school year. There was an increase and was asked that Tahoe looked at increasing the amount of home-cooked items in a monthly menu and, and those things were added in. They brought back the chef to, to work with a couple of classrooms and then also introduce a new food item on the menu. The chef was there to prepare, uh, and interact with the students. We had a student and parent request on, you know, is there a way to kind of li- eliminate or reduce the amount of plastic waste we had? And a program was being explored and then unfortunately, again, that's when the, uh, when the state came in and told everybody, you're gonna shut your schools down. Uh, so I think they will certainly pick that up again when, when it's an opportune time. Looking at, um, this upcoming school year, I had a chance to meet with, uh, Nancy Smith from Tahoe and, uh, meals will be, you won't be able to self-serve, it will now be, instead of an offer option, it will be a serve option, so that the, uh, people in the kitchen will actually put the food on the tray, hand the tray to the students as they come through. Um, there will be some more prepackaged items, especially like at the middle school, high school level for the à la carte, so that the sanitary concerns are taken care of. She's looking at offering a, a grab-and-go breakfast in the morning, so when students come, they can still have a, a breakfast option here, provided that's school. Yeah, and then, uh, right now, there are a couple of staff members that are working with Nancy, so that any virtual students wish to take part in the, uh, lunch program will have that opportunity of almost, it'll be somewhat similar to the spring of the year. Um, then, the unfortunate part there in the spring of the year, everybody was able to get those meals basically free and, and the school district was reimbursed for those meals. Now will be, uh, the meals will be offered, you'll be charged those through your lunch account, but they'll still be offered. And we'll look at the potential delivery or pickup areas, kind of like they did in the spring of the year as well. So Tahoe has been working, uh, through, through their protocols and through their company to try to provide those opportunities for our students here as well.
Is there concern from the food service provider, um, about the ability to continue to offer high-quality meal options? Given that the number of meals they're providing on a daily basis will probably go down pretty, pretty dramatically and they'll lose some economy of scale?
They have not shared any of those things with me, uh, I have continued to receive updates on, you know, safety protocols that they'll be going through for all of their clients. Um, but they have not, they've not shared with me, you know, that, hey, look, you know, if your meals drop below three hundred in a day, you know, we're probably gonna have to pull out, I've not, I've not heard anything like that in any communications with them. Yep.
I, we, we won't, you can go first, that's fine.
Doctor Dunn?
Uh, just to follow up on Joni, uh, do you, do you have some numbers as far as percentage of students that are going a hundred percent virtual and, um, does Tahoe have a plan for food distribution to kids who are going, for kids on virtual days?
Yes, they're working at kind of a, almost like a, a signup form, kind of like we did in the spring of the year, who, who needs the meal and location, so right now Tahoe is working with a couple of our teaching staff on, on how they'll pull all of that off, whether it's a pickup site like, uh, I know they use Soldier's Park, um, downtown as a, as a pickup spot. So they're, they're trying to work through, uh, those items right now, but yes, there is, they are working on a plan to be able to provide meals for anybody that's choosing to stay one hundred percent virtual. Or the students that are here Monday, Tuesday, but would want a meal Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're, they're working on, on those options and capturing that information and, and being able to provide services.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So they are really operating under the same contract as what we had in your bill, Mitch? Correct. There's not been any asks to alter or adjust the contract at any time. Down at the elementary school, kids, it sounds like kids are gonna eat in their, in their classrooms? Um, that is not the plan right now. Oh, it's not, okay. In, in an attempt to try to make sure that adults have, you know, contractual thirty-minute duty-free lunch. We're working on some in-house dividers, um, students coming in and as they go through the line, you know, again, what point at what you want, it'll be protected, you know, protective, plastic shield, tray will be served and then the, um, the thought process is they would have an assigned seat, so every day for lunch, I come in here. They will have the kids come through the lunch line, working on the spacing and then go back. As a matter of fact, uh, Nancy shared with me that Tahoe may actually look at trying to hire an additional staff person that can float in the cafeteria area to help clean up and disinfect spots, so that between one lunchroom and the next, that there would be an opportunity to get the table, that section of the table disinfected as well. So when the kids go to lunch break, will it be, will it be a section of first grade only in the lunchroom then at one time, they'll stagger the times then? They'll stagger, I'm not sure how it'll play out, I'd have to ask Mr. Renwick, um, how specifically, but at times it's like this group goes to recess while this go- group goes to lunch and, you know, in a, on a normal year, that's kind of how they put things out and somebody might be in music or, you know, somewhere else, and that's how they're able to rotate larger groups through. We'll have half the building in on Mondays and Tuesdays, so the number of kids in the building will be down a little bit, so that might aid in that, but they'll still have to use some of that rotation. So it's still worked out, yeah, Mr. Renwick?
Yeah, Larry, that's a good question, though, there'll be a little bit of overlap. Um, I talked to Nancy, too, and, and we're gonna try to make, we will make sure that, um, kids will still be seated six feet apart, even within their cohorts, and we'll have a limited number of kids, you know, in the lunchroom at any one time. So we've got to schedule together, we're still, uh, playing with the details, but, uh, we think we can make it fairly safe to for a couple of classes to be in there, again, as Mitch said, their numbers are greatly reduced.
Sure. And you would envision similar system up here in high schools? Yeah, yeah, we're working on, like I said, homemade, homemade dividers, so that there'll be something thirty inches up, so when you sit down, you'd be able to see through, you could talk to somebody on the other side, but you know, it's the one time you can take your mask off is when you're eating, so we're trying to provide that protection to the best of our ability at that time. But yeah, I mean, we'll have a, we always have two lunch shifts here, so it'll be a little bit easier to divide that up as well between middle school and high school kids, but yeah, we'll be working on that, social distancing. Yep. District reopening plan, um, I know it's also down as an action item, there was some concerns about when electricity was restored to the elementary school and would there be enough time to get in and clean it? Um, the operations committee met last week, uh, and we had Roger, Paul Skilletan, and kind of talked through some of those things. And, uh, basically, he's kind of throwing all hands on deck at the elementary school and he is basically assured us that the building will be clean and ready for eye-ability on the twenty-fourth of August, so the thought was do we look at pushing the elementary school, that, that face-to-face hybrid plan back a week? And Roger said there was no need to do that, so, so moving forward, I know the committee had talked about a lot of things, they talked about, you know, do we, in some of our metrics that we look at, you know, Amy had kind of shared some metrics, you know, that some states are looking at and CDC and so on and so forth. Some of the metrics that the board discussed is, you know, what are other districts around us doing, how are they doing? If they're bringing back more students at one time, are they able to continue with those students, are they gonna have to shut down?
It's like, they look like Leo Z.
Things will come from Iowa County Health, you know, if, if there is that so-called outbreak, Iowa County Health will be involved in informing us our, our course of action and, and what's the best way for us to go if we have to go through a hundred percent virtual. Our hope is, as we look at the numbers, if the numbers reduce, that we can start to add more and more students back into the building. to add more and more students back into the building on a daily basis so that we can have
Oh, what else is in here?
The folks who return to normal.
I'm not sure what's it do, just go
No, it's a flame rocket launcher. It's a rocket or flame.
Hey, say it again, flame.
Flame rocket.
Say it again, flame.
Some of their start virtual.
There's a Marcia in the meeting who's microphone is on and their kids are hollering. We can't hear anything. Can Marcia please shut her microphone off?
We're looking for it right now, Amy.
I think she just logged off, whoever that was.
Mitch has got it here on the, okay. Also kind of would fall under the reopening plan. I had a chance to talk with Todd Schmitz today, bus routes there. They're kind of waiting for some of the final numbers for registration to come in, to be able to proceed. They will be looking at some of the guidelines, you know, have families sit together. So instead of three brothers or sisters getting on the bus and taking three seats, all three would sit in one seat. They're also looking at potentially having any students that basically go to the same daycare kind of occupy similar seats because they'll be cohorting there. I shared a document with everybody here on your table and I sent to Dr. Dunn and Dr. Lindsay an email and you needed to see it in color. So that's why I had to do it this way. Basically, it says bus seating chart on there. If you look at page one and page two of that seating chart, if you look at the green shaded dots, that is trying to maximize distance between students on the bus. So there would not be somebody sitting right behind the driver. They would sit one seat back, but somebody would be in the very first seat away from the driver. That distance is six feet. So if you look at the green dots, the very first green dot on the top, on the right-hand column, to the very first green dot on the left-hand column, those students would have to be sitting next to the windows. That's approximately six feet. If you skip a seat going backwards, it's approximately five feet between those two green dots on the bus. And if you had two students sitting in the same aisle, there's approximately four feet apart there. So if you try to maximize that distance, they're looking at probably a maximum of 12 students that they could get on a bus unless they were family members. If you, if you're short, like I am, and the number of times I rode on a school bus to a girls' basketball game and couldn't see over the seat back because they're so much higher these days, you could have a student sitting on, in each seat. And if you put one per seat, again, if they were not siblings, you could get a maximum of 23 students. Each student's going to be asked to wear a mask. There will be a hand sanitizer on each bus. So they would sanitize their hands, have a mask on, come in, sit down on the bus. The seat back does provide an additional barrier, so to speak, between each row of students. So there is the potential to put, you know, up to 23 students on a bus, on a bus route. So I don't know if there's any concerns or thoughts or comments.
I think we maximized it. I mean, to me, I'm starting to think about this, something like this is getting a little ridiculous almost because the kids are going to walk down the aisle in the seat, right down the middle.
Yep.
They're going to, so, I mean, 23 is the best we can do with the distancing. I mean, we're trying to, you know, I mean, I know we're trying to do our best here, but
Right.
we got to be realistic about things too. That's my thoughts.
You know, and I, and Todd and I talk, you know, the likelihood that, okay, the first student on goes all the way to the back. And so you fill it up from the back forward, then you stop at one of the schools. The school you stop at first, most likely, you know, the student that's way in the back is the one that needs to get off at that school. So you're, you're right. I think there's going to be a lot of students passing by each other and walking on the bus. Dr. Dunn, you had your hand up?
From the, this is Amy Tibbetts. Apart from the medical end of thing is its time of exposure. So the length of time that you're within that six feet. So if they do fill up the bus in alternating fashion, starting from the back, moving forward, then you would end up decreasing the timeframe in which they're six feet apart.
Yeah, what Amy, what Amy says is correct. And I, I guess my, my question is how many kids we would anticipate needing to, needing to have a seat on these bus routes? You know, I think if, I think if you've got kids masked on the bus, you know, I think if you put one kid in each seat, which would be 23, plus any family members or fellow daycare kids that could sit next to them, you know, I wonder if that would meet our needs for busing? Does anyone know how many kids we'd anticipate needing the bus? Or do we know how many parents are planning on bringing their kids to school?
Especially when you consider we're spending, we're sending 50% of the population to the elementary school and 25% of the population to the older grades. That feels like 23 is going to be very reachable. And in many cases, we could do lots, assuming, assuming that we plan on running the same number of bus routes as we, as we historically have.
Right. And, and as those registration numbers get finalized, Todd will be able to give, have a better idea because, again, in our conversation today, running the pre-K and the K half-days, there is the potential that we might need to add a third bus to the midday route. But also in those conversations, it might be where he reduces a route before and after school, depending on who takes advantage of, of the busing or who's willing to bring their own child. You know, they're not comfortable putting their child on the bus. So I will drop my child off and pick them up every day. So we're still trying to get through the rest of the registration numbers to get, to get some of those final numbers nailed down. But, but, but that's kind of, I think Todd was kind of looking for some direction too from the board is that if you're comfortable with 23 on a bus, that helps him put some of those routes into play.
I, I think if you, if you fill from back to front, starting with alternating rows and then fill the in-between rows and allow family members and daycare kids to sit together, you know, make sure every, every kid's got a face covering. I think doing 23 plus, you know, plus family is, is acceptable. And I, I think passing in the aisles is minimal risk.
This is Amy Tibbetts. There's also been research on increase in ventilation. So the question would be if we could open a couple of the windows on the bus to get an increase in air circulation, weather permitting, might be useful.
Yeah, I've seen that same, some of that same information. And then Okay. So Angie just shared 208 students who have registered, have asked for busing services. And then I will come back to the final piece on the reopening. As of 9:40 this morning, for a district, we had about 83% of our students registered and 8.8% have opted into the virtual, all 100% virtual option. Now it differs a little bit. At the elementary school, there's about just under 10 and a half percent that said they want all virtual. Middle school, 7.3, and high school, 7.4% of the student population has indicated they wanted 100% virtual.
Of the ones that are registered?
All of those students that have registered at this thing.
So the 17% left unaccounted for right now, what, what do we know about them?
They'll show up the first
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll, they'll be here the first day or the, the day they're supposed to be here and not think anything of it. I mean,
Okay.
we'll probably get a few more that will come in, but
And that's normal?
Yeah, it's not unusual to not have everybody registered by the first day.
Do, do we believe that we've seen a, much of an exodus of people opting for other schooling options? We had some feedback around our, our model not suiting everyone's needs.
Correct.
Do we have many reports of people selecting other education options?
I can, I will double check with Elaine. I have not been made aware of people opening and rolling out. I can say that we've had additional open enrollments in.
So far, I just know of one middle school student.
As an out.
As an out.
Okay, thank you. But I've had a couple of requests for open rolls into our district.
And I've heard of a couple St. Joe's, a couple that have chosen the Wisconsin Virtual School because they knew exactly what that was going to entail and had some questions on what ours would look like. But I can't imagine it's 17%.
We're, we're on the buses yet, Mitch. So you got 208 students right now that need busing? Yep. Six routes generally is what we run? I want to say it's eight. Eight routes? Okay. So that might be cut back depending on where those students are, especially on any given day. You know, on a freshman sophomore day, you might have a few more riders. Sure. On a junior, senior day, you might not have any, you know, based on driving to school or whatever. So that's 23. But like, like when we talked about, if we combine families together in the same seat. So it could be, you know, it could be over 23 individual students per bus, just looking at these numbers.
But 208 students, we never have more than half of them coming to school.
Right.
But yet 104. So at eight kids per bus, that's 13, I'm sorry, eight bus routes, that's 13 students per bus.
Okay.
Now, geographically, that's not how things work out.
Exactly, right, exactly.
23 should
23 easily. 23 or
And he may have the option of cutting one and then get a midday route.
Right, exactly.
Seven may be sufficient.
So I, I think we're, you know, it's one of, it's something for me to keep in mind budgetarily. If we, if we run all the buses morning and night and add another bus route, that means some money will have to move budgetarily. But I understand. But if, if we're dropping a morning and afternoon route and, you know, it'd be awash at the worst. So I know that the committee had said they recommend, you know, getting an advisory group together and, and sticking with initial plan with a hybrid option on, starting on the 24th. Everybody's starting as they normally
Do you want action hour? Do you want to wait until we drop down to action?
Right, until we drop down to action.
This is Amy Tibbetts. Can I make a motion that that committee gets developed sooner than later so we can start looking at data and helping address some of the issues that are coming up here at this board meeting? It seems like a lot of the discussions on the busing and different things like that might be better suited for a committee. So I make a motion that we develop the committee and try to get this implemented within the next two weeks.
Excuse me, Amy?
Amy, you can't make a motion. You're not a board member, so you're not allowed to make that motion. There is an action item.
Okay.
About the reopening plan, so it'll be, it'll need a board member to make the motion in a, in a second and move from there.
We're, we're getting to that, Amy, so just, just hang on. Thanks. Under, under that reopening plan, when, when will parents be notified of, of this program? We've got two weeks to go. You know, we're talking about busing. The, the lunch program, I mean, parents should really be aware of that before school starts, the first day of school, of course. Do you have a date in mind, Mitch? Or was that a plan to put out communication to the parents before school? Absolutely. Okay. Now, we're, we're trying to communicate everything that we, that we have in place, that we know we can, we can pull off. We want to try to communicate that. And, and when we have it, we want to get it out as soon as we can. We try to update the blueprint. We try to update a frequently asked questions component of that. So yeah, as soon as we can get that firmed up and have the details for that, we'll get that out. What would be the latest? I mean, any parents that are listening tonight, you, you think yet this week or will it be next week? I would love to say by the end of this week, we would have more of that information out there for them.
Okay. I will say that in my house, today was a very exciting day, waiting for the teachers to be announced. I, if I got asked once, I got asked at least 100 times if I had gotten an email yet from the school about who their teachers were going to be. So people, not just parents, but students are hungry for information. We know it's going to look different, but we need to know the details now.
I remember those days too. My, who'd you get? Who'd you get? I got, oh, I didn't get that one. I got so-and-so. So, yeah, it is, you know, especially for the younger students. High school kids, they don't care. And a question, a question that I got through that may, may be on your list of concerns for parents is seniors now not, not going till Friday. So the first four days of, of the school year, what's expected of them? What will that be? Virtual learning? Will they have to log in the very first Monday of school? Mr. Austin?
We are working on that. Well, we're working on actually having them log in that. We're getting a schedule for the virtually, virtual part out there for them.
Okay.
We're working on that a little bit more tomorrow yet, but they'll be expected to start that week. I can't say it's going to be for certain that every senior will have every class on that Monday because of the teachers that teach those kids. But we're working on that virtual aspect right now. We'll expect for the start before, for a minute.
Okay, all right. And then the elementary school, you know, kids that will be in daycare or, or have a babysitter that doesn't have, have the, I don't know, the tools for virtual learning until the parents get home or whatever. Again, that's when I have to be communicating with parents, what's expected of the elementary kids. Correct. Yeah, that should be coming from the elementary school. Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Can we, maybe anything that we have to offer by Friday, we get to them and if we have to add it or change it. I just, that's been the biggest thing I've heard is, is because it's so different, everybody just wants to know more.
Sure.
So I think anything that we can tell, anything that they hear is going to put them more at ease.
We haven't
Even if it's not the whole plan.
I have an meeting tomorrow at 1:00 online, so
And if we have
I shall
Next week, I think they'll just be happy to know as much as they need it.
That's going to be that blueprint. That's where we're looking a lot of it. Just let's all one central location.
Because I will be able to have sixth grade orientation like normal, but I'm going to be sending information home to parents and we will have orientation for the sixth graders that first day that they're here. We'll start their morning off with that.
Anything else on item two? Item three, I'll turn over to Ms. Dahl.
I just wanted to update the board, give you some information on fall sports season. But I think it's getting close to two weeks ago, CISA III and Southwest Area Superintendent presented a plan to the WIA to move fall sports to spring, spring sports to summer, and then do an abbreviated version of winter sports starting after January 1. And we were hoping at least they would move the medium risk like volleyball and high risk like football and soccer to spring and maybe keep cross-country and golf in fall, which are more your low risk. That was voted down quite significantly, eight to three. So there is a fall sports season in place. Some conferences are opting out. Right now, we have a few schools in our football conference, which is not same as our SWO Conference, where if there's a fall season, those schools want to play that fall season. And I really think it's about maybe 50/50 right now where we're still talking about it. And Monday, the 17th, we have a meeting and we're waiting for the WIAA to meet on Friday. I don't have a lot of hope that they're going to change their mind. Maybe there might be a little more pressure seeing maybe the big, the Big Ten Conference in some of these Maybe there might be a little more pressure seeing maybe the Big Ten Conference and some of these college conferences postpone football or, you know, postpone the fall seasons. If we do have the fall season, there's going to be significant changes in place. You know, either no fans or limit on fans, masks at indoor events. We have to make a decision on concession stands. And we're going to agree on that as a conference, okay? So if we agree on it as a conference and Mineral Point does it, then Fenimore has to do it. So those are some upcoming details that, you know, we're still working on and try to make it as safe as possible.
One of the schools is in Dane County and their athletic director joined the meeting last week and basically said, if there's a fall sports season, we're not allowed to host because of the requirements and regulations in Dane County. So they would, their football team would have to play all road games. Because their, Bellville is the school that's part of our football conference now for this upcoming year.
And we are working on, especially in our gym, to be able to livestream events. So if you're a fan and you cannot make it to the event, you'll be able to log on and watch the game on your phone or your laptop. And we're still working the details out for.
Yeah, I think we'll talk a little bit about that tomorrow.
The stadium too, so.
Pretty promising that way.
Yeah.
That future will allow us to stream pretty much everything other than, not even, not just sporting events. We can stream other things too.
Yeah.
So just an hour.
Whatever, Vicky?
Yeah.
And Matt, when you were saying that in the conference, all schools will agree to certain.
Protocols.
Protocols. That could be though moving like volleyball to spring?
It could be.
Okay.
It could be. There was some talk, but I don't think you would, I don't think you're going to get an agreement with the whole conference because there are some schools that are adamant that they want to play a fall season.
I understand.
So how much ground do we have to make a decision independent from the conference if they are making a decision that we feel doesn't meet the needs of our students? If they're gung ho that there's going to be fans at every game and concession stands because this is Southwest Wisconsin and we love our football, can we say that's not for us? We're not going to have concessions or we're going to limit?
Well, it's pretty much in agreement with concessions that if we either eliminate them or everything has to be prepackaged. You know, it's not going to be, you know, handing a barbecue to a person, you know, anything like that. So we're going to, we come up with an agreement and I suppose we could say, you know, at Mineral Point, we're not going to have the concession stand. You know, that would be a situation we could.
Something more.
They're leaning towards those things.
Yeah.
A limited number of fans, streaming all events.
Yeah.
Concessions, I think they're leaning towards probably not having them because they don't want people to.
Right.
We hosted a sectional semifinal basketball game for the WIA boys last year and it was a limit on the number of tickets. And we probably had between players and fans, maybe three hundred people in the gym. You know, so the conference was kind of looking at that. So each, each school was talking about, okay, if we're going to do this, you can't say we're going to let the visitors have eight tickets per player because maybe their gym doesn't hold enough people to keep them separate. So that might be a host-school issue. But that, one of the things they're trying to get on is that, okay, if we're going to agree to limit the number of people then each school has to agree to limit the people based on what their gym or their stadium allows. You know, I think of some football places where everybody sits on the same side. Well, you're going to have to take that into consideration when you're trying to think about the number of people you allow in your stands.
And just like, you know, just like the school year, it could be evolving and changing. You know, if there's a positive test and, you know, we have to shut down one of the teams, then they're looking at, you know, a significant number of games that would be missed.
This is Amy Tibbetts. I guess I just have a question if, how we can consider opening up for football games if we can't be open full for education? And this comes from certain data that came even from Franklin, Wisconsin, that just their kids in football practice, practicing together had an increase in transmission rates. And the people that are fourteen and older, so all of those people in high school sports are at an increased risk of actually transmitting the disease compared to younger people. So I guess looking at it from a holistic, whole-community approach, if our schools aren't ready to be open, then how can we be open to that even if we're limiting the number of participants?
I share, I share your same concerns, Amy, that that's why I was hopeful the WIA would move the season.
We've had that same conversation at a county level. We had a very large multi-county meeting with superintendents and county health departments. And none of the county health people felt comfortable recommending fall sports due to the circumstances. That's why the southwest part of the state got together and asked the WI to take action and try to move the seasons around a little bit so that our students would at least have an opportunity, a better opportunity to start and finish the season by moving it out of the fall. The WI was not interested really in that proposal. Spent a great deal of time talking about why that couldn't work or wouldn't work. And then it was voted down on a vote of eight to three. There is some hope that with the state Division III schools, the WIAC, Platteville, Whitewater, they've canceled their fall sports and tried to move them to the spring. Big Ten and Pac-12 and so on and so forth, potentially doing that. The hope would be if that happens, that the WI would then look at it and say, it only makes sense for us to try to move to some other kind of plan. But yes, Amy, there's not one person in school that doesn't feel the same way that we're trying to be safe, we're trying to social distance, and then you want to have kids play a full-contact sport like football. And we know that something's going to happen. And that may result in at least two weeks without being able to play a game and potentially a third week. And if you don't play those games, they become forfeits on the schedule. And anybody that's hoping to make the playoffs, if there's still such an opportunity, you know, we just don't think it's in our kids' best interest to have something in the fall. But yet, if there is something in the fall, it's a, you know, it's that balancing act of do you allow your student athletes that opportunity? And we're not comfortable with it, but we're going to try to take the direction given.
Dr. Dunn? All right. So, Vicky, what are we looking at for a timeline for a firm decision for the fall? I know everything's really rapidly changing, but just help me out again. So WIA is meeting on Friday, even though they already voted down the resolution from Southwest Wisconsin to move to the spring. And then is CISA or SWAL meeting again after WIA meets?
Right, on Monday. Right now, cross-country and girls' golf start practice on August seventeenth. Football, volleyball, boys' soccer on September seventh. We were, we were waiting to see with some of the state's college conferences and now with the Big Ten to see if the WIA might reconsider their decision, but I'm not real hopeful of that.
So as it currently stands, from a state-level, it's up to the local conferences of whether to have a fall season or not. Is that?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. And there are some conferences that canceled their fall season. And some of the schools in those conferences are trying to jump into other conferences to be able to play.
So is there going to be a fall state champion and a spring state champion? How does that, how's that work?
That's one of the things that's going to be discussed on Friday, I believe. It's going to be, they're going to lay out the season.
Okay.
Have playoff games and a state championship.
Okay.
So Vicky, your really official stance with the meeting, at the meeting with the SWAL will be to move football and volleyball to the spring?
I don't, I don't know if, that's something I need to talk to Matt and Mitch about. But if enough support, we can get enough support from SWAL to do that, yes. But if we don't, we just can't go and move to the spring because then we're not going to be able to compete against that.
I mean, you envision a majority vote at this meeting on the seventeenth if the WIA does that change?
I think there'll be a vote. I can't, I can't tell you what the vote will be, but I think there will be a vote.
So on the items, action items, fall sports, would we take an action on that? Would we give a new direction?
Well, I guess, you know, as a board, you know, what do you want to see? Or do you want to leave it up to the discretion of, you know, the administration?
Well, I think sometimes what we want and what realistic is, is two different things. I want kids playing sports right now. Somebody else might have a different opinion of that and I have to respect that opinion.
And I think there's a lot of conference schools that are in that same boat. There's a feeling that the safest thing to do is to move. But if the WI won't support any kind of a tournament opportunity, we have some schools in this area that have super-strong cross-country programs. And their mindset, you know, their boards, their administration, sure, their boards don't want to take that opportunity away from the students. So if the WI is holding a state tournament, they want their children, they want their students, athletes to be able to have that opportunity to take part in that. So then I think there are schools in the SWAL that are like, my board's more in favor of moving it to the spring, but if that doesn't happen, we'll compete. You know, it's like, this is what we know we want. But if more schools don't jump to the spring for football, we know we're not going to be able to compete. So therefore, we'll show up on Friday nights in the fall. You know, so I think, I think there's a lot of people feeling like their hands are tied.
Because like, you know, some of these conferences that say they're going to play in the spring, there may be no playoff tournaments or state championships going on in the spring unless it's a full-state move.
Not to mention they're directly competing with the baseball programs.
Right.
Which in a big school, they get away with, but here you're picking one or the other.
Right.
If we move football and WIA doesn't move, then you're telling your kids they can't compete.
Some might not look at it this way, but I kind of do. The problem I have with moving sports to spring is you're going to just get done with winter sports, you're going to jump into football. You're going to jump into baseball. As soon as baseball's over, kids go right back into football and then right back into basketball and wrestling. Where summertime is always a time for kids to somewhat recover, relax. And we're going to push them, kids. You don't have to push your kid that hard, but the elite kids are going to do it.
But if we're worried about keeping kids healthy, because that's what I'm hearing, is kids, the kids need that time to recover, especially from the strains and things that they play through. But if we're worried about keeping kids healthy, we shouldn't have them playing full-contact sports when counties are seeing, local counties are seeing new cases at five, six, seven, as many as eleven new cases reported a day. And that's been this week, if you've looked at.
You're right, but I.
Iowa Grant mafia yet.
You're right, but I don't see young athletes being the big spike in numbers. I'm not saying they won't, but right now I don't see it.
I don't know enough about the recent positive tests.
I think it'd be hard to give Vicky a recommendation or myself anyhow until we find out what the WI is going to do.
Right.
And if we know that eighty percent of our conference would be interested in doing a spring program, then I'd be okay with that too.
Yeah, the hardest part, again, when we come back to football, the hardest part is the SWAL is not the SWAL.
Yeah.
Right. It's Cuba City, Darlington, Fenimore, and Mineral Point. That's, that's the only SWAL schools in our football conferences here. Basketball, Southwestern, and Iowa Grant are all in different conferences. So we pulled in a couple other schools. So it's hard, you know, when we talk about what are we going to do with the fall sports? I brought it up. I said, are we only talking about volleyball as a SWAL conference? Because Riverdale goes to a different conference, you know, they all, they're all, you know, it's four schools. It was brought up, you know, do we, for one year, do we just have it as SWAL if we all move to the spring? Can all SWAL schools commit to playing in a conference schedule? And a couple of the schools had said, they know they wouldn't have a program if that were the case. If they weren't going to the Six Rivers or the Ridgeon Valley or wherever, they would not have enough kids to have the program. So I don't, I don't fault any of them, but they have to make that decision on their own needs too. But you're right, you know, we were all hopeful the WI would look at this plan. Fifty-one percent of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin supported that Southwest plan of moving things around. There was, and I'll call it an even better proposal, but it was called a truncated proposal. So you might only be playing conference for basketball, but there would be a state tournament. You would only play conference for football, and there could be a state tournament. You would only play conference for spring sports. And the spring sports state tournament would be done June fourteenth, which is only two weeks later than normal for baseball, softball. You know, so I mean, kids could have gotten out middle of June and still had that summer opportunity to, you know, heal, recover, compete in the sport area, you know, that they're most interested, whatever. But again, it was, there was a lot of discussion around why they shouldn't do that before they went to the vote.
And since the plan was proposed, Minnesota and Illinois moved their fall sports to the spring.
Dr.?
Well, I think that if, if in between board meetings, Vicky is going to represent Mineral Point in any kind of a vote, whether it be SWAL or in the football conference or whatever, then I think we owe her the direction from the board to say, you know, we would like you to, you know, vote to play in the fall or vote to play in the spring. Now, let's say, let's say we, now, Vicky's recommending that we move sports to the spring. I personally support that, as much as I would love to see fall sports happen.
I'm recommending that, Dr. Dunn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vicky.
That's, that's on the table.
Okay.
It's hard to move if there's not going to be a tournament series.
Right. So, I mean, obviously, if, let's say, let's say Vicky, let's say, let's say, you know, the SWAL votes to keep fall sports eight to three or whatever. And that means the three schools that didn't want to play fall sports and wanted to move to the spring, you know, they either need to, you know, comply, basically, you know, sign the kids up against their better guidance for the fall sports or their, you know, their, I guess, with their better preference. Or, you know, we need to see if there's going to be an alternate spring sport setup, like Vicky was alluding to. Is there going to be, is there going to be a setup for schools that play in the fall and fall sports that play in the spring? So I think if we need to give Vicky guidance on a vote, I, I would support doing that right now. Although, you know, to Larry's point, it sounds like things are really moving rapidly. And if we want to wait to see what the WIA says, maybe we would need to reconvene sooner to give Vicky some advice on this. But, you know, in general, you know, I think the same theories that apply to how we got to the hybrid model should apply to fall sports. And that is, is it safe to allow all kids to fully return to school with appropriate? And with appropriate pandemic guidelines, safety guidelines? And we decided the answer was no. And so I think we need to be consistent across the board. I also think that, um, you know, it's, it also gives us a chance to reassess periodically as the school year starts. And, um, you know, in the spring, you know, we may be fully open as cases go down. And we may be able to be fully play sports as cases go down. So I, I think we need to be in lockstep with our, um, with our approach and strategy to what we're going to expose the kids to. And my last point is, one of the goals of the hybrid model is not to keep kids at home. It's to keep kids in school as long as possible, right? To prevent the, the full closure shutdown because of a huge outbreak that might happen. And if we stick with a hybrid model, maybe we'd be able to get through the whole semester, um, under something like that. Whereas some schools might have to shut down completely in the next month or two. Same thing with fall sports. I mean, I, I get concerned that if half the team has an outbreak, or let's say half the conference, you know, has teams that are, got players that are quarantined and can't play, that threatens the season, just like Major League Baseball is being threatened. And maybe we have a better chance of our kids finishing a full season and maybe getting that playoff experience and that state championship, you know, chance that they've dreamed of. Maybe we give them that better chance if we postpone the whole, the whole season. So I think voting to move fall sports to the spring is not really an anti-sports vote. It's really, um, uh, just a different way of looking at risk and kind of calculating, trying to, trying to achieve the goal of getting the kids the richest sport experience as possible. Knowing that recovery and, and logistics with all the seasons is going to be all messed up. I get all of that. But those are just, uh, my thoughts. So I'd be interested in having this discussion and, 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 you know, passing some kind of directive to Vicki so that she knows that she's got the board behind her on whatever she votes on in these meetings.
Mitch, you might be the vote at this meeting.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
Right.
The suits.
Yeah.
All right. Is that it with that, Vic?
Yeah, just wanted to give me an update.
All right. Well, let's, uh, let's move on to the items for action. Let's go on to the, well, you kind of briefly discussed it at, at the beginning. Um, the district reopening plan, potential delay in face-to-face start at the elementary school.
Hey Nate?
Yeah?
Why don't we just go to number three and finish our, have some closure to this one topic?
Hey, let's do that. Let's go to action, item number three. Fall sports, uh, SWAL conference 2020. I guess, does anybody want to make a motion on that topic one way or another?
Vicki, do you want to say a few last words as far as what you'd like from the board?
What, what I've heard from the executive director at the, the meeting is that, you know, if teams choose to play in the spring, they were going to do everything they could to allow playoffs or, or tournaments. But they weren't going to guarantee it depending upon the number of schools. So I think it, a decision we have to really consider and listen and see what this next meeting on Friday is going to bring about.
I totally agree. Because we don't.
And then just trust, trust us, the administration, to make the right decision.
Well, you guys got to meet Monday morning at seven because at.
I'll do it. I'll meet anytime in the morning.
That's what we need to do, that's fine.
Yeah, the meeting's Friday and then our SWAL meeting's on Monday.
I mean, because I, I don't, I don't think our kids are taking an opportunity away from our kids, especially seniors, if we move to the fall and they play six games and then they're done. There, there's, there's no tournament. And I know, you know what, I know athletics is not everything. But, you know, we've got a couple of football players that, you know, their school, there's colleges that are looking at them for scholarships. And, you know, I want them to have the best opportunity. If that's in the fall, so be it. But I'm hoping some board, board of control members gathered a little sense here in the last few weeks. And maybe we'll revisit and vote to move it to the spring and have a playoff and a state tournament.
Do you, as a head body director, share your thoughts with the board of control?
I share my thoughts with the executive director and the assistant executive director.
And I have reached out to at least one board of control member from this area that represents this area.
Okay. Asking for a spring season?
Yep. Yep.
So they know.
They, they, right, they know how our conference feels.
Right.
And, and this area.
And it was, one of the, one of the board of control members was the one that recommended a letter from administrators. He may have some sway for the WIA. So it's basically going to come down to if the WIA basically sticks to their guns and don't allow spring sport, uh, we just decide whether we feel comfortable letting our kids play this fall or not.
Yeah.
Otherwise they're not playing period.
So, and that, that's after, where we're talking about giving kids the option to play a full contact sport. After we said we couldn't give kids and students the option of being in school full-time because we couldn't, we couldn't keep them safe, we couldn't do enough to keep them safe. So if I can't keep kids safe enough to go to school, and so I am not giving the option of five days a week school, how can I give them the option to play a full contact sport? I mean, that, that, I feel like that's a really big double standard there. It's not going to be a gradient there. And there's going to be a lot of people who come out on the other side of that. But I think we're being hypocritical if we say, yep, you can play football because you want to, but I can't let you send your kid to school five days a week.
If there's already conference, that, conferences that are not participating, such as Dade County, it sounds.
Yeah. Well, your, your bigger conferences like, like major, big eight.
Sure. But conference, yeah, the comparable conferences, it'd be hard to have a tournament anyhow, but. And in playoffs, season and championship.
Well, right now in this area, the only comparable conference that I think that opted out was Rock Valley, right?
And Blue Stone.
Right.
I, I do think they'll be able to play games if you choose to go to the spring. I just don't know, they don't know if there'll be a tournament series and they're supposed to talk about that this spring. You know, and then at that point, you can, we, we can put it in as a conference, we probably want to agree on some of the proposals for what games look like and stuff. But the WIA may, they may surprise us all and change the direction on Friday too. Because if the Power Five Conference decides to not play football here in the next couple of days, that may sway their decision even more. So there, there's a lot, lot of unknown until Friday. And even then, they could change it at any point. The worst thing that could happen is obviously no football season or no volleyball season. It's not just football, we're talking about four days' kids going where, that'd be the worst thing that could happen.
Yeah, so, so do we want to make a motion on this, um, one way or another? Or, uh, do we want to make a motion? Well, does somebody want to make a motion? I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth.
I would, I will make a motion to table this to a Monday morning meeting, if at all possible.
Everybody want to second that motion?
So we'll have the information from the meeting.
We'll have the information from the WIA and then we can give Mr. Waiter and MS is all clear what we think. And we'll know what the WIA's plan is then.
Do you think there could be changes other than spring or fall season?
Well, one of the things that they stated in their press release about this meeting is that the fall sports season, they weren't going to discuss it. They were, what they're about moving it, they were going to discuss how many games and what it, what the tournament series would, would look like. But I, I honestly believe if these colleges are going, college campuses are, are going to postpone their season, I find it hard to believe that they're not going to revisit it.
So there's a motion on the table we need to second before we should have a discussion.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll second the motion so we can have a discussion. Uh, except Gary, maybe, can we make the motion to, to table it until after the WIA meeting? Without specifying what day we.
That's fine.
Talk about it.
Okay, now we can have a discussion. Most of them are seconded.
So after, after the WIA meeting and before the SWAL meeting, will, will you need guidance before the SWAL meeting? Or will you go there, get more information, then come back to us with? Do you think there could be a second SWAL or conference meeting?
I, I can find out. I, I can check it and see what's on the agenda and see if we're going to actually vote, which I, I'm pretty sure we will. We're going to have to make a decision because cross-country girls golf start Monday.
And that was a one o'clock meeting on Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think we owe it to Vicki and the administration to give them guidance on this very important issue. And, uh, even if it's just to say, Vicki, we, we as a board give you full authority to make the decision you see fit. Even, even if that's what we vote on. You know, I think that, I think it's good to give the administration guidance, you know, some kind of backing so they know they've got the support of the board going forward. And if we, uh, I think to Gary's point, if the WIA says, well, the Power Five just canceled fall season for football, we're going to do the same, then there's really nothing to vote on. You know, it becomes a moot point, it seems like. So it does make sense to wait until something final is decided at a state level. And then we can give Vicki some, some guidance before she has to vote.
All right. Any more discussion on this? The motion is to table this until after the meeting?
WIA meeting.
All right. Any more discussion?
This is Amy Tibbetts. I just have one, one question of discussion. So if it is voted on that there is a fall, um, sports and football is included, can we have a meeting to discuss what our plan is as far as potentially opening the school for more education? Because I know there will be significant community upset around that issue, as Joni has mentioned.
By that time, it wouldn't start till September 7th, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And we'll know, obviously, we'll know how, we'll know how we sit by then as a district ourselves. So yeah, we could use the information that we have on hand at that time.
All right. Angie, call the question please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
I understand.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsey.
No.
Duckus.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. All right. Uh, let's jump back to the top. The district reopening plan, potential delay in face-to-face start of the elementary school. We already had this discussion, but.
Amy brought up, you know, you talked about having a committee. So if you want to form an ad hoc committee to serve an advisory role to the school board, kind of put some timelines on it, when, when you'd like first meeting, kind of the makeup. You talked about community members, parents, students, staff, administrative representation. You know, you could take formal action and, and put that in motion.
Can you maybe too just clear up, initially this was on there for the delay?
Correct, yeah. The original, the original thought was we would be asking you to take action to delay the start of face-to-face for the elementary school. But due to Rogers' report out to the committee meeting, that, that the building will be ready, it will be clean, it will be ready for occupancy. Uh, staff members have already been coming back now. So there is no need to delay that start. But as an action, I mean, you could form that ad hoc committee.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we go ahead and form an advisory committee, an ad hoc committee.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on the ad hoc committee?
I'd like to recommend that, to Mitch's point, that it includes at least one staff member, one community member without any students in the district. Um, and then at least one parent who is, has their children learning 100% virtual. And one family member from a student who is in each of the three buildings. Have, to have full representation of the, of our constituents.
Nate?
Yeah, Doc?
I, I agree with Joni. That's the point I wanted to bring up is we need to determine what the qualifications are for these people, who they represent, and the number. I would like to not just have a motion and I would like to know just what Joni brought up. The qualifications, who they represent, and the total number of this ad hoc committee. That, that's just my desire.
I think that a healthcare provider should be included in that description as well.
I would agree.
Seven is a nice number for a committee.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, do we need any school board representation in that committee? Or does that committee just bring their comments, bring their comments back to us?
I think the school board could be part of a, it would be an administrator in that, right? An additional seven members.
Okay, so it's the plus, this, them plus us.
When we put the ad hoc committee together for the elementary project, people that were interested in being on that committee were directed to email me if they were interested. And then we brought that list back to the board. So that we just weren't, you know, there may be, you know, a substantial amount of people that we haven't thought about that, that may show interest. So, and then we also had a, you know, we charged them with a purpose for this committee. So as a board, you know, you gave them clear direction as to what their purpose was.
And we, we also need to be clear, just based on past misunderstandings, that this is advisory only?
Yes.
There is no decision-making authority given to an ad hoc committee that still lies specifically with the school board.
So does this become a second item that we discuss on, do we give people through the, through the weekend? And we're meeting sometime after Friday, right? For the WIA, the post-WIA discussion?
Yep.
Do we ask for volunteers and then have this as a second agenda item for that next meeting? Because we want to get this committee in place quickly.
Do we need to do it before then? Do we do it?
Well, we need the volunteer, we need to give the volunteers a few days to volunteer.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I, I, I like Angie's idea to have everyone email her. But I, given our crunch timeline here and, uh, details that need to be ironed out that I think would benefit from some outside stakeholder input, I don't necessarily feel strongly that the board needs to ratify every member of the committee before it meets. You know, I'm fine with, uh, uh, I'm, I'm fine with Mitch, um, you know, maybe in conjunction with the board president, you know, finalizing the committee based on interested parties uh, in the hopes that the first meeting would be within a week.
I like that.
Not to be that guy, Mitch, but can you pull up our policy on ad hoc committees? And just make sure it doesn't say we have to ratify the committee?
I hope we don't have to.
That's a good point, Andy.
I just know we did last time and it seems like we, we have, we didn't have to.
I think if we have to, I think Joni makes a good point that if we're meeting Monday morning, that maybe we could just, you know, ratify the committee members, you know, Monday morning and then try to expedite a meeting, you know, later next week.
I, I have the policy here in front of me. I, I have the policy here in front of me. They are to be appointed by the board by standard majority vote, except where a different process expressly established by law. Prior to making the appointments, the board may request nominees from one or more sources. The board retains discretion to add, remove, or change appointments to any ad hoc committee at any time. The board similarly retains discretion to either fill or not fill any vacancy. I mean, it's policy 186, if you want to know.
Yeah, I, I found it. I pulled it up at least on the screen in front of the board members at this time, Dr. Lindsey, but thank you.
Okay.
So it does seem like we have to approve.
I would agree.
So again, we have to approve it. But from what I've heard, it sounds like Mitch could bring us, could do the, maybe put it together and we ratify it? Or are you guys interpreting that as we need to actually be in the selection process?
What I took out of that, that we have to vote on that to make it majority vote? Yeah.
I don't know that we have to be, we just have to ratify the committee. I don't think, yeah. Because we, we received, in the past, we received.
A board decision at the time the board creates the committee. So you can decide, as Dr. Lindsey was reading. Members of an ad hoc committee will be appointed by the board by standard majority vote, except where a different process is expressly established by law, by board policy, or by a board decision at the time the board creates the committee. So if you're creating the committee, you could establish that this is how the members will be brought forward. And then ratified at that point in time, or however you wish to proceed.
Well, first of all, I think between Mitch and Nate, they could come up with a committee with the help of Angie. And then first part of next week, we could meet for two purposes, I guess. And then at that meeting, maybe we could even have the committee members, the potential committee members join us, maybe Monday, Monday evening at this time. And we could go over some ideas of, of the purpose, like somebody alluded to in the reason and objective goals, whatever. I'd be fine with that.
So Monday evening, we would miss the?
So you would have a meeting Monday morning, sometime, potentially sometime Monday morning?
And then meet Monday?
Before the SWAL meeting. And then you'd have another meeting Monday evening. Is that?
Oh, that's, the meeting is Monday or Tuesday next week?
The SWAL meeting is Monday.
Monday.
Oh, it's Monday. Okay. Or we could meet Monday morning for a, for a meeting too. I was just, I was thinking, I thought we'd.
Can we define objectives of the committee now?
Yeah, I think that would be a.
Yes, otherwise people might not be interested or might be interested.
As a starting point, I, this, this committee needs to be able or to be in a position to provide feedback on the school reopening plan. Or this, I mean, at that point, it's not going to be a plan, but our, our school reopening.
Safe reopening.
Safe reopening.
I just would like to make a comment. It spells it out on page two. And Erin is entirely right, and so is Joni. We need a statement of what the charge for the ad hoc committee is to do. You need a specific statement. And you have to have a clarification as to whether the committee's role is deliberative or advisory. You know, if they research an issue, there's a bunch of things here. I think, do you have page two for them, Mitch?
I, I did not get to it, no.
Okay. But anyway, and then it was also, we're supposed to appoint an appropriate timeline. So just, Joni's right, Dr. Dunn's right. We need to have a, a reason. And we have to let them know why we're asking for them to be on this ad hoc committee. And whether their role is advisory, or what they're really to do to research, or so forth. We're, we're delegating to them some responsibility in that regard. That's all I have to say.
I feel like it's advisory. I mean, we want them to give us their opinions and their insights from their experiences as we move through the reopening process.
Wasn't there conversation around the need for childcare? Or tutoring and services such as that? That may be something that a group like that may be able to help develop or resource out? Wasn't that kind of how this all got started? Wasn't that the concept behind this?
Personally, I don't think that's what the advisory committee, the reason for this is. It says, I mean, first, to, to advise and recommend safe reopening, including our oversight of our virtual options and try to enhance that somehow.
We did have a discussion in the past. We talked, yeah, it was.
Okay, so is this two different things?
Well, I don't know. I think we're getting way too complicated.
I, I.
Way too complicated.
So, so I would disagree. I think that we need, that we need feedback from parents about what their virtual experience is. If it's that it's not, you know, for my first grader, this is really a struggle because they're at daycare all day and I get home and I can't do this at night. Those are things we need to be hearing as a board. And hopefully, we would be hearing them otherwise. But I think that part of this committee is giving us that kind of feedback. It's giving us another connection or another, another touch point with just different groups throughout the community.
Well, so. Not that they're going to develop the virtual.
Exactly.
Feedback.
It's the feedback.
You know, I think, I think it's, I mean, we're all kind of saying the same thing. But I mean, I think saying, you know, we're asking the committee to review our reopening plan and advise on logistical details. And, you know, help, help advise the board and the district to maximize safety and maximize academic performance with this setup. And I think if we keep it that general, we, you know, we can review, they can review schedules, they can review, you know, distancing guidelines. They can review the plan for the cafeteria as far as the wall partitions. They can review the busing plan. You know, they can review, like Joni said, how, how the virtual learning is going. And basically, just give us our, give, give the board their thoughts on how this plan is going. They can also review the data as, as Amy had suggested, you know, of the cases and how are things trending? What are medical experts recommending? How are other school districts doing with their plans? And, you know, not only kind of reviewing and planning for the start of the school year, but then now what? You know, how are things going? What's our, what's, let's review our phase two, you know, that Mr. Austin's been putting together for next steps. And I, so I think that's all included under reviewing and advising on the reopening plan in terms of safety and academics. Something along those lines. Does that, does that seem reasonable? And, and I agree, Angie, I, I think this should be separate from a kind of community group that's of volunteers that's here to help assist students, families, staff with, with struggles of getting through the year, whether it be daycare, or tutors, or masks, or transportation, or whatever. Because I, I think that, that a, a separate community is, a separate group is starting to coalesce around those needs.
Right, so where are we at? Do we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second. So we were just basically having a discussion on that and then. Define the purpose of. There we go.
Okay.
So we've defined the charge and we just have to find the scope of the committee.
Correct.
So we also need to identify an appropriate timeline for the completion of the task and for the delivery of any interim progress reports.
I would say this is, in terms of an advisory ad hoc committee, is because this is a fluid situation. I think it's appropriate to make the timeline ongoing. A lot of them are created for a set decision and not a fluid situation.
Right.
So I think it's, it's proven to just say that the timeline is, is ongoing and fluid. But we would like them to meet as soon as possible. After, yeah, after we establish.
Can we request that the, that the committee report to the board at, at regular meetings?
Absolutely.
As a standing agenda?
Absolutely. I mean, that'd be according to policy.
And the final item on that four-part list is a notice that each, that such a committee is subject to the Wisconsin open meetings laws. And that the records of the committee are subject to possible public inspection to the extent provided by public records laws. So that's pretty.
So.
Pretty, yeah.
Yep.
It's an official committee, I guess, is the bottom line.
Correct. All right. If that's all the checks, is there any more discussion on the ad hoc committee? All right. If not, Angie, we'll call the question, please.
So what do we have as far as who's required to be on the committee? I have a staff member, community member without children, someone with a virtual student, and a parent with a student from each building.
Okay. And a medical professional.
Yep.
That's seven. Well, and that's.
Are you limiting it to that? Or can there be more than that?
I feel like.
Are we capping it at a number? Because we could have, you know, what if we have 20 people that send in, in, you know, their, show their interest?
I think once you put the notice out, that, that is something maybe we could iron out.
How about at least seven and no more than 13? Something like that.
Sounds good. Okay. Always a limit, yep.
I don't want it to end up being 40 people.
No. And some people might have another, bring something else to the table that we may have missed. So we can't put that down. Okay. So, Angie, you'll call the question, please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Action of number two approval.
On the same topic.
Yes.
We, part of the motion for accepting the hybrid plan was that the board would revisit the conversation around masks. Since that point, we've had a government mandate. But I, I think at least having that conversation, because we said we would. Whether it's, we're going to follow the mandate.
We're going to follow the mandate. I think, yes.
And just make it clear.
Yep. Well, I mean, do we have choice?
But the mandate is only through the end of September. So I think that it needs to be on our radar, that when we meet in September, we'll have a much better idea of how things are going. But we're also going to need to be prepared to have a decision for what happens. I think, is it the 28th of December it wears off or whatever?
Yes.
The day after that, we need to have a clear direction of what our expectations are. Sure.
And there was, there was a concern from a parent, it's been a while ago now, about masks versus face shields. Has that been addressed, Mitch?
Shield, if you look at the recommendations from the governor, shield does not qualify.
It doesn't?
They have, I'll call it a badger shield, because that was one of the models I looked at. It was a shield, but it had a basically cloth mask material underneath it that would allow for more protection. But the idea that a shield does not give you the same protection that the mask does, they said that, that was not necessarily an acceptable face cover. Doc?
Larry, I had a brief conversation with Angie Klein about this because she's trying to coordinate something for our hearing impaired students and maybe other kids that would have a hard time, you know, hearing and understanding with a mask. And the solution that's been recommended, given the CDC guidelines recommending against face shields, and the, there was a, there was an American Academy of Hearing Impaired, I'm going, I'm quoting it wrong, but there was a National Association website that suggested that the kids wear masks with, with basically a clear covering so you can see their mouth and read lips when people talk through the mask. So I, I think, last time I checked, Angie was going to look into that as a possible option.
Angie, start.
The other thing I wanted to say was, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So Dr. Osterholm addressed that at his, on his last podcast, that epidemiologist. And he said that the face mask actually increased the risk of transmission because the particles are potentially breathed in and contained within that mask. Not the mask, excuse me, the face shield. So the only way he would support a face shield is if you had a mask.
Good information. Thank you. Doc, you were saying something else? You're muted.
Okay. On the, on the reopening, Amy made some good points that I wanted to get Mr. Austin's opinion on regarding phase two plan and maybe shifting the balance towards elementary kids' schools in, in, in class more and using some high school space. I, I think that those are points that we should seriously consider moving forward if we're going to transition away from our current plan. If, if case rates tend to go down. And I wanted to see if, what, what phase two kind of rough draft looked like and if that addressed those, those issues.
Along those lines, Erin, that's what my next comment was going to be is I would like to see, not that we've seen per se phase two from that, but there's been enough discussion. I think we need to have a phase two ready to, to put in place for the elementary school, whether it's four days for everybody or finding space, like you said, if, if that's even possible with two grades in at, at the high school. But I think.
And those, those would be details that we, we really need to start working on here. Obviously, all my energy, a lot of our energy right now is going into making sure everything with this phase one is going to go off and not having many issues. We have people coming through the schedule each day. We have people looking through things to make sure we can get the virtual option part from together, schedule for those meeting times. Because we expect kids to jump on the Zoom meeting. You know, when they don't have their class, if they're not in person, then there's a Zoom meeting for that class. We expect them to be on that Zoom meeting. We're talking about more accountability for the fall than there was in the spring. Because I think that's something that you probably want to see a little bit more of is the accountability piece, which is what we're working on right now. I can certainly start to put together what phase two might look like. There are some challenges with it because we don't, we do only have a limited number of teachers teaching certain things. So groups would either get bigger, we might have to mix some of the groups. So that, in that sense, groups get bigger. But it is possible to do it. And that's something that I can definitely start looking into and give to you guys here soon. We're trying to make sure everything, everything else is checked off as far as, you know, phase one, we want to make sure we're ready to go. I have a staff meeting tomorrow morning just to talk about more of those questions.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Matt.
Any more on that? All right. If not, we'll go on to the approval of handbooks.
We tabled the employee handbook and the athletic handbook. And then coming out of committee meeting, the recommendation was to approve the athletic handbook as is and task the homecoming committee to meet with students and develop a, a new plan around the homecoming court selection process. There was good guidance that came out of that, that committee meeting. I know both Mr. Austin and Ms. Dahl were part of that committee meeting and know what direction he'd like to see. So the recommendation. So the recommendation coming out of that was to approve the athletic handbook, and then information was shared with the staff, and with approval tonight, the reasoning around employee absence and pay, basically following the federal guidelines, was the only look at the employee handbook at this point in time. We will put it on as an addendum, and I would be able to send out additional explanations to all staff members how this would work. And again, the recommendation was to approve the employee handbook at that time coming out of the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve both handbooks.
Can we hold a second?
I'll second it.
Donnie, go, Doc.
With the appendices.
What was that, Andy?
With the appendices that Mitch explained.
I got one question. The, if a teacher or staff member is sent home, if they've been exposed to COVID or tested positive for COVID, this won't become, I mean, on any given day throughout the winter of the school season, we have subs in the school for various reasons, and a lot of them are, our teachers not feeling, our staff members not feeling well. So how will you, Mitch, verify that either the staff is tested positive or has been exposed?
It will, in essence, it will come down to a trust factor that they need to inform me of the reasons, you know, they can give me their symptoms. These are the symptoms I have, it's recommended I stay home by the doctor, but in essence, that's what it's going to come down to. I don't necessarily have a right to know all of the medical conditions that go into employee absences.
So will you recommend that your employee go get tested then, and then will that factor into your decision?
It might, it may not factor into the decision. If they've been exposed here at school, obviously the county will, Iowa County will call to inform the school.
Sure.
We know there's an exposure took, you know, and it happened in the sophomore biology class. So I only have one biology teacher, so that I know that individual's been exposed. Protocol is they self-quarantine 14 days. So, or, you know, and if they don't find out until two days after exposure, well, now they have to at least stay quarantined for 12 days.
Okay.
That includes weekend days, so they might miss some time. What I would ask staff though is, even though they've been tested for a positive test, I would ask them to continue to the best of their ability their assignment virtually from at home.
To work from home.
So they would still be working and would not necessarily have paid time off here. If they are sick and have symptoms, you know, and very incapacitated, then obviously these things come into play.
Sure. Just an example, staff member A calls you and says that they're running a mile fever, and so will you automatically grant them this two-week, this two-week program? That will become part of the employee handbook?
Not necessarily the two-week.
The CDC came out with new guidelines on the 17th of July, they did 10 days from symptom onset or negative test.
So it wouldn't necessarily be just, I have a temperature here today, so sometimes it's symptom-free 10 days, it might be, you know, no fever with no medicine kinds of things. So it doesn't necessarily go right to two-week stay vacation.
Okay.
So that isn't necessarily how this works.
All right.
As long as you've got a system put in place.
And which column requires the medical? Obviously, the order from the county is going to come from the county.
Right.
Reason number two of employees...
Reason number two, where Larry was talking about the self-quarantine.
Correct.
To qualify requires healthcare provider confirmation.
Correct.
So they would have, for lack of a better term, a doctor's note to qualify for reason number two.
Okay.
To be on this program.
Yep.
Doc?
I think the system that should be in place is if any staff or student has suspicious COVID symptoms, that the health department be notified and, you know, that recommendations be carried out, you know, based on what they recommend, you know. They're charged with the duty of trying to control this pandemic in this county, and I think just to take the burden off of Mitch to decide, you know, what to do with employees and, you know, mandating them getting tested and all of that, I think just, you know, just encourage all staff and students to be upfront with what your symptoms are, you know, we report them to the health department, and they'll recommend testing and implement contact tracing and give quarantine recommendations that we should follow. I think that's the simplest thing to do as far as, you know, for the administration.
I have to agree, because that takes away, that takes away, an administrator have to worry about whether you can trust an employee or not. Puts it in the county's hands and leaves the administration out of it. I like that idea. And this mandatory reporters, this is one of the things that we've just been notified that will require passing information along. So if we suspect somebody as a mandatory reporter, we have to report to that next level, so.
So I just, I don't want us to create a culture, though, where people avoid admitting that they don't feel great, and I don't know, you know, when you think, oh, I might be a little, I might not feel very good, but I'm fine, I'm just a little groggy today or just have a little tickle in my throat. I want, if we have staff members who are thinking, I'm not sure if I'm feeling 100%. I don't want to incent people to not do their jobs, but I don't want people to be taking unnecessary risks, especially if that risk involves exposing an entire classroom of kids to something so contagious.
But I think the virtual option gives us a lot of freedom to continue to get work out of those that are working and being paid to work. And I think that the medical requirement protects Mitch from having to decide whether or not somebody's telling him the truth. You know, I guess my only concern would be maybe the HIPAA part of requiring the students to tell us what's wrong with them. I don't know how that works, if a student calls them sick, if Mitch is allowed to ask them why they're sick or try and pass that information on. Doc, that would be my only concern, with that being the policy per se.
I think actually we already do that when a parent calls in or asking what's wrong with them.
And some parents will tell you and some parents...
They're just not required to tell us.
Right. Some parents just say they're not feeling, other parents will say, well, sore throat, you know, fever, you know, so some people are more willing to at least share some of the symptoms with us, but that is a possibility to ask, you know, so what symptoms are you experiencing right now?
Doc?
I mean, there's no doubt that there's, when you report a sniffle and you end up getting a swab up your nose and having to stay home for two weeks, I mean, there's incentive to not say anything, and I get that. So I think the antidote to that is really simply telling employees and students and families and say, listen, the goal here is to stay in school as long as possible, keep school open, which is what everybody wants, right? So if a student comes to school sick and, you know, makes a conscious decision, I know my kid's hip, but I'm going to send my kid to school anyway because I don't want to face a two-week quarantine, then there's a risk that the kid infects the rest of the cohort, infects the teacher, yada yada, then the risk of shutting the whole building down increases. Same thing with staff, you know, obviously staff want to be there for the classroom, you know, I think that approval of this, you know, COVID sick pay is going to help. But again, I mean, encouraging staff to be upfront with your symptoms, get tested, you know, follow the recommendation of the health department will, in the long run, keep the school open as long as possible, which is everybody's goal. So we all have to play our part and be as upfront as possible. I think that's the only way to create a culture of transparency and teamwork, I guess, for lack of a better term.
On them lines, Dr. Dunn, it'll be interesting, this falling into the winter, what our cold and flu season is actually like with everybody, you know, wearing masks and washing their hands, see if there's a difference.
I totally agree.
Great information for you guys.
I didn't see a cold virus in clinic in March, April, and May, not one. And I think there's other viruses circulating now that are not COVID, and we're going to see more of that in the winter, and it's going to be confusing. There's going to be strep, you know, but you're right, I think overall infectious cases will probably be down of all viruses.
Australia saw a drastic drop off in influenza because of the hand washing and all of the procedures that kind of came back to being normal practice, social distancing.
That's right. Australia's having a very mild flu season. It's like a tenth of the cases they had last year.
All right. Anything else on the handbooks? Proving the handbooks? All right. If not, Angie, we'll call a question, please.
Are we approving them all together?
Make some motion.
Okay. Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Sappis?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, that drops us down to employee services and approval of retirements.
We have two retirements and one resignation. I was able to talk to both of our retirees, both emotional, very sad to leave under the circumstances, both very similar circumstances, taking recommendations in the medical profession, that coming back into the building to teach and some of the requirements that they have outside of school, the care that they provide for family members, both not wanting to leave under these circumstances, but basically for their health and wellbeing and that of family members, they felt the need to retire and the resignation, again, personal health reasons, medical recommendation not to come back into the building and increase exposure. All three very, very wonderful employees, very outstanding employees, and will be missed as we move into the future, but I would recommend accepting the two retirements and the resignation.
Do we like to make the motion to accept? I will. Larry? Second? I'll say here. I guess with that, we can call the question.
Sappis?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Item number two, the approval of the district nurse. Angie Klein, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to explain the process you went through for getting to the recommendation for a school nurse?
Sure. We had six people on a committee for the school nurse, members of the wellness committee, including Dr. Dunn and Danielle Swenson, representatives from admin, including myself and Matt Austin, and then teachers in both buildings, including Cindy Notham and Jane Barr represented the administrative assistants. So we had a number of applicants, a very qualified pool of applicants, I think we were all really impressed with those, but we brought in three applicants for interviews, and Jane is being recommended by the committee unanimously.
I've got a question. Why is closed session the agenda? If we wanted to move something in the closed session, I'm just using Jane's example here to talk about salary, just as an example. We haven't had closed session on the agenda as a standing item in several months. In, we're talking with Bob Butler, and I put a question into him again, but typically the agenda needs to be clear enough so that somebody can look at the agenda and see what kind of business is taking place, and if we leave closed session on, somebody might say, well, I want to know what's going into closed session, so they'll stay through an entire board meeting, whether it's in person or online, and then we table it because we don't have a closed session item. We're kind of, false advertising isn't the right way to explain it, but I've asked Bob to give me further guidance on that. I don't have anything as of tonight, but we have not kept it on as a standard issue that we've just continued to carry forward.
Can we move something in the closed session if the closed session is not on the agenda, Mitch, when it comes to employees?
Something like this, you cannot. We would have to have another meeting, because it wasn't, closed session wasn't on tonight's agenda, we would have to have another board meeting in which the item, it would just be go into closed session and proceed that way.
Okay. I want to start, and I want to make this very clear, that I know all three candidates are very qualified, I have no issue with the recommendation of Ms. Jane Lindsay. The issue I have is two issues. Number one, I was told by one of the candidates that the question she received about being a possible nutritionist for the district was a little upsetting since the posting for the jobs for a school nurse, and I did ask Mitch Wainwright if all the candidates were asked the same questions, and he said they were. But then I talked to another one of the candidates who said she was not asked anything about being a nutritionist, but yet she was extremely disappointed when she heard on Sunday, the day before her scheduled interview, that Jane Lindsay already had the job anyways, and that information was leaked out from the school district. And I think that leaves kind of a black eye in the school district, and I think we should hold ourselves to a little higher standard than that.
So I will just, there were 12 or 13 standard questions, all the candidates were asked the same questions from the same preset. One of the questions had to do with how you could support students and teachers in the classrooms, and based upon responses, you know, some of the candidates asked what sort of things. We did get into a discussion about how our school nurse was working with our food service program to help institute some healthy habits, trying new foods, many of the items that you guys talked about in the review of food service tonight, and it was pointed out that there was no dietitian on staff, but at no time did we say that that was unexpected. I mean, we were talking about nutritional education and helping our students learn how to make healthy choices, and, you know, I know that they help in a nutrition unit at the high school as well for health, so, Dr. Dunn, did you have something you wanted to add to that discussion?
Well, I'll let you finish, Angie. You're doing great.
So I, you know, based upon the interviewer's responses to our questions, some of the discussion wasn't exactly identical, but the question sets were all exactly the same. And so I just want to reiterate that at no time did we say, you know, we expect you to be a dietitian. There was a question about how to create a plan for somebody with a food allergy, there was a question about educational opportunities to support our teachers, but that wasn't the dietitian part. And, you know, I will say that we looked at a pool of candidates, I asked the committee to review the pool by Friday, and... I asked the committee to review the pool by Friday and give me feedback on who they felt was the best to bring into the interviews. I double-checked with Mr. Austin on Sunday about the people I had flagged for an interview to make sure that he and I were in agreement. I called and set them up on Sunday over the weekend and the interviews were Thursday and Friday. And I didn't, I mean, it was the committee's discussion after the interviews on Friday where we made a recommendation and we didn't talk about the interviews afterwards on Thursday either because we wanted to wait until we had held all of the interviews to be able to meet as a group. So I, that's how the process went.
I, I hear your concerns, Gary, just as someone who was, who happened to be on the interview committee, I can reiterate that the, the questions that were asked were standard questions for all three candidates. And, you know, after, after the 12 questions, like Angie said, the answers kind of directed different conversations, some of which included nutrition. But I can also say confidently that qualifications as a nutritionist did not weigh in the decision, the final decision on, on the final candidate. And the, the decision was unanimous by the committee. I can't speak to how the news got leaked out ahead of time.
I think that that's just one thing that I'd be really interested in knowing how somebody could just say to a person, well, Jane Lindsay's already got the job before she had an interview.
I think Jane was the last person interviewed, so I, and there wasn't a decision made until all three interviews were completed. So I don't, I don't know how that happened, but I'm just one person on the committee.
I understand. But then I will make the motion to accept Jane Lindsay as a recommendation.
Maybe we like to second that.
I'll second it. And for sake of discussion, to Larry's point, you know, this isn't the first time that a board member has wanted to discuss a sensitive issue regarding hiring an employee in closed session, which, which I'm not opposed to. So can we, can we just re, it seems like it's standard procedure to approve new hirings in open session. Mitch, but can we, can we somehow survey the board ahead of these meetings to say, do any board members have concerns about any of these candidates? You know, because then we can hold the closed sessions so that board members feel comfortable making final decisions. I just, I just want to, I feel like this process needs a little tweaking.
This is your board agenda, so anybody that wants closed session on the agenda is allowed to ask for that.
I think we can make it, not to speak for the whole board, but I think we can make it standard procedure if we have a contract approval that we include in the closed session because then we can identify what the closed session would be for, whether we use it or not, when we are discretion.
So in the past, we've had closed session and have not used.
Right. So I think just as a standard practice, if we're having the contract approval that would require the sensitivity level of a closed session, we just include it on the agenda. And we can all do a job of assisting Mitch in checking on that as the agendas come out. Because as Angie said, at the end of the day, it is our agenda.
Yeah, maybe, maybe as a board, we can just have a practice to look at the agenda when it comes out. And if we feel like we have some concerns that are maybe sensitive or confidential that we want to bring into closed session, then we just let the board president know ahead of time and put it on the agenda.
Yeah, with enough notice.
Yeah.
Again, with any, with any contracts, I think you should be automatically.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And then if there's anything else outside of that, other ones.
So with Jane's contract, I see she's on step 11. She has a typical teacher contract in, what the teachers would be on?
She, yes, yeah, that has been the practice in the past is the school nurse has been on the salary schedule for the teacher's salary schedule.
Is that comparable to the way other schools in our area handle, handled school nurses? The district nurses?
There aren't very many that do it that way. A lot of, a lot of schools have a part-time and/or use combinations of, you know, trying to get Cease to provide or we have somebody that we share one day a week kind of a thing. But typically, yes. The other district that I'm familiar with is Dodgeville. And I know theirs is on a salary schedule as well.
This salary is comparable to the past nurse, Mitch?
Yes. Every, every contract down here for approval, it saves the district some money compared to the person that was working in that position. So this will be a little bit less than what the previous nurse was making.
And you negotiated salaries, correct?
Yes.
Not the, the committee with Dr. Dunn and they, they had nothing to do with salaries?
Correct.
And that's typical.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second, unless there's anything else.
And Jane's benefit eligible?
Yes.
Okay, no.
All right. All right, Angie will call the question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Abstain.
Duffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, item number three, approval of part-time medical high school night custodian.
This individual will work in this building with two other people. It's a five-hour-a-night position or 20 hours, sorry, 25 hours per week, not eligible for benefits. And there's not a lot of people that are looking to work five hours a night. So I'm talking with Roger. This individual had applied for a previous position, was, was interested in filling this position, so that is our recommendation that we offer that contract, the night custodian, part-time night custodian.
Mitch, is this a new position or is this filling a current position?
It's filling a current position with Steve Gorder leaving.
Okay.
Someone moved into Steve's position that was a part-time night custodian.
Okay.
So that created the opening here in this location.
Okay. So, and just to be clear, so all, all four of these positions are already in the budget for this coming year?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second?
I got one question, Nate. At 24, at 25 hours, if performance becomes a question, this person can be fired? I'm just asking a general question.
Absolutely.
He's under no contract?
No.
And when Roger hires his staff, he's responsible for them?
Correct.
Mentors them, teaches them?
Yep.
I mean, there's.
Valuation.
Correct.
Yep, all of those things.
There's a higher standard, being a custodian in a school versus being a custodian somewhere else, I guess, right in my shell.
Correct. Yep, you are correct.
Okay. We have a motion in a second? All right, Angela will call the question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Approval of the sixth grade teacher. I'll let Ms. Dahl speak to this position.
We interviewed, it's kind of late in the game, obviously, and we interviewed two candidates and we selected the candidate. She's coming to us from Tulsi and she did her student teaching here, I think it was two years ago. So she'll fill our sixth grade teaching position, lives in Belmont.
Student taught under Mackenzie Brown?
Yep.
And Mackenzie highly recommended this position, this person.
Did you say how many years of experience?
She has, is it two or three?
Yeah.
She's very, very excited to be in here. I thought she was going to jump through my phone.
I'll make the motion, we approve the hiring of the sixth grade teacher.
I'll second.
Any more questions on that? Angie, call a question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Moving on to business services. Oh, yeah, that's right. It's not on my list here.
Sorry.
Kind of knew about it, so I can't see that.
It's okay.
All right, so approval of first grade position.
This is a little bit more unique situation. They, there was an interview committee interviewed and made a recommendation to fill a first grade position we had open in the spring of the year. And when I informed Mr. Renwick of the position, he contacted the interview committee and I'll let him speak to this, Matt, about what the interview committee's thoughts were.
Hi, we have different perspectives on, you know, how to approach this. The, the big challenge was the resignation coming in on Thursday and then school starting in two weeks. We had a similar situation a couple of years ago where we had a late resignation and we went with a runner-up from the previous position. We just, there were two candidates we really liked and we brought both of them on and we ended up going with that runner-up. So this was a similar situation where we had a runner-up and just felt this was a very strong candidate and as well as given the timing of everything, we wanted to bring her on and did a reference check today with her principal, just glowing recommendations. I don't think if we were to post it, I don't know if we would find as quality a candidate as we, as we have now. So, yeah, this was, again, like as Mitch said, from previous interviews a couple of months ago, this was our, our runner-up.
And your interview committee was unanimously supportive of this decision?
I wouldn't say there, it. We, when we got to the end of the process, these were our two people that we brought for for a second round of interviews. And so based on that, that's, and the timing of everything, that's why, why we, why I offered the position to her. So through that interview process, she was our second choice.
Would anybody like to make a motion or would anybody? Yeah, maybe like to make a motion prior to hiring the first grade position.
I mean, hiring the first grade teacher. I'll second. My question is, how many years of experience, Matt, and where at on the salary schedule do you have her?
She was 13 years at Mount Hore, but I think her entire career's been at Mount Hore. I believe she's at level 10, which is a little bit less than what she would be making at Mount Hore, not that much though. She's got a reading specialist and a reading teacher license, so she's a, she could, similar qualifications to Rachel Schrader. So in addition to teaching in the classroom, she also has that as well as an adaptive special education minor. So she has some unique qualifications. She's, she was currently teaching first grade and now we're, yeah.
Any more questions? Okay, Angie will call the question, please.
Duffus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Nate, before you move on, this is Angie, I'm sorry. I just want clarification from the board that I can post for the special education assistant position that you guys accepted by resignation tonight?
Yeah, sorry, the resignation was Gina Reickling, who was a special ed instructional assistant.
Do I have to take a motion on that, I'm assuming, to vote on that, to post that position?
Sure.
Should we post the special ed assistant position?
Okay. Second, that's.
Second, done.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
Just describe the position, Angela.
So last year, or when Gina was hired, she was the assistant to Morgan Burris in early childhood for the morning and then floated across the elementary, actually supported a 4K student in the afternoon. So it is a position at the elementary school. It would still be, be providing support for our early childhood program in the morning and then be able to provide additional one-to-one support in the afternoon.
I haven't got this question yet, Angela, but I assume I will. With our hybrid plan and the low number of students in the building, does this position need to be filled immediately?
I would say yes. So, you know, most of our assistants are assigned one-to-one to students, so it doesn't matter so much as if there's, you know, 20 kids in the class or nine kids in the class that one student still needs direct support from an assistant. The other thing too, our special ed services are going to be working with all of our families, but we'll be providing a lot of our specialized instruction on the non-physical school days, so on the Wednesdays or on what would be considered virtual days. So pulling in students for their individualized support outside of the two days that they attend physically. So there'll be a lot of individual one-on-one time to give them their specially-designed instruction. And that's not every student, but there's a number of students that are going to require some additional support. So, you know, like I said, it doesn't matter how many kids are in the classroom, that one student still needs a one-to-one assistance to be successful in the room. So I do see that the numbers don't really change for us regardless of a hybrid plan or not.
Do you know off the top of your head, how many special ed assistants you have in the elementary school currently, Angela?
I believe there's 13 across the district and so there are six or seven in each building.
And again, Gina, Gina's resigning because of health needs and the need to be at that virtual, you know, she could do something if it was 100% virtual from at home, but coming into the building is just not healthy for her.
I understand.
Motion in a second, any other concerns, comments? Angie?
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Duffus?
Yes.
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Going to business services, approval of bills, table, and credit card statement? Anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second.
I got just one question. If it was with first grade, we'll resume the contract then, Nick?
Yes.
For this year coming up?
Yeah. Well, there are transfer stations.
Yeah, I understand, okay. Again, we talked about Topper's contract, will be the same?
Correct. As, as laid out.
Laid out, yep. Any of the contracts that will get come out that need to be renegotiated?
No, both of those were five years.
We're going dependable solutions again.
Correct. The lunch one is like five, one year, but the bus one can be a five-year contract. So, it can play out just a little differently by the DPI guidelines.
Just a comment, Mitch, and maybe it's, likely it's COVID-related, but we didn't get the descriptions on the credit cards. Is that because there's nobody here to?
Yeah, I could, I could check into that and get, kind of a line item again, yes. Yeah, I know what you mean.
It's hard to, not that we would have charged the same thing six times, but it's hard to tell. Under Matt's, there's six of the same charges. It'd just be nice to have them identified so we know for sure that we might duplicate it at all.
Matt, can you speak to that? There were charges to the Bureau of Education, $259. Was that like a, a virtual conference or something?
Yes, we sent, or we didn't send, we set up, I believe, five or six, yeah, five teachers, special education teachers to attend a one-day virtual training on how to use these digital tools to maximize effectiveness. But yeah, it's for, it's the same thing for five different teachers. Yep.
Any more on the bills? Well, if not, we'll call a question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Tappas?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Next meeting dates will be Monday, September 14th, 6:30. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Or?
Or? Wait.
Monday?
Monday, we've got this.
August.
It's a special meeting. The next regular meeting.
Yes, there you go.
All right, sorry. Now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody like to second?
I'm waiting for Doc to second one up there. Lindsay?
You're on.
I read his lips.
All right, we can do that. All right. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Bye, guys.